Yeah, it's not on her schedule. I don't know what she's up to.
Uh, we'll just leave that hesitant and I will mute in here.
Good morning, Jennifer. Can you hear us okay? Work sessions are in, this work session will be live streamed on Rio Blanco County YouTube at YouTube channel. Work sessions are intended to provide opportunities for the commissioners to study difficult issues, gather, and analyze information, clarify problems, and give staff directions. No official decisions will be made. We're going to talk about unfunded mandates first. Um, then we're going to talk about staff positions and prior direction and priorities later. Um, so AGNC and Mesa County and Garfield County sent a letter to the state citing some unfunded mandates and their opposition to them and ordered a state law that says that they are not required to do anything with unfunded mandates if the state doesn't give them, give us money to do the stuff that they're requiring us to do. And so we're just here this morning, going to talk about that and Matt was going to give us some information on what it was costing Rio Blanco County and some of those unfunded mandates.
Yep, do you want me?
Yeah, please.
So we did a little bit of research on what the building department may be looking at for some of these unfunded mandates. And I gotta be honest with you, the, it kind of started with this WUI when we first had this conversation with Vanessa Trout a couple of months ago. Uh, we've all exchanged emails on that WUI. Um, I contacted Garfield County to see what they're doing. They did buy into it. Um, I, I don't have it in front of me, but it was like line item one. I think Cali responded to the line item one. And that line item one was basically there, we have an option of participating or not participating. And it did say in that that the counties that do not participate, there are no consequences at this time. So at this time is the key phrase, right? But I think in, in our situation, we can remain status quo. So I wouldn't consider that an unfunded mandate because we're, we have the option of not being in it.
Is that because of our size or is that with every county in the state?
Um, it didn't say Rio Blanco County specifically. It just said in the language that, um, counties have the option of joining and or not join. Now, I don't know what the consequences will. It said that there are no consequences. That's what we're probably having in the state. So I, I know the answer to that.
So Matt, just to be clear, so that what the first one we're talking about is the Wildland Urban Inface, which is the WUI code. And that's SB twenty-three dash one six-six and SB twenty-four zero 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 five, I believe.
Okay.
Just reading that just to make sure that's in the record for that.
Um, Vanessa had a contact, I believe, that she was working with through the state of Colorado. Um, again, I apologize for not having that email, but I did read through it again yesterday. And sure enough, it did say right off the bat, line item one, before it addressed any other issues that we have the option of participating or not participating. And if we do not participate, then there are no consequences at this time. So I think that that's where it kind of kicked off, right? Everybody kind of got a little bit, I mean, even myself got a little bit panicky in that situation, uh, reading all of what was required. You would have to amend your building codes to certain, you know, certain codes that would, that would have to do with wildfires, you know, that, like, for example, it'd be no asphalt shingles, no wooden decks. You have to mitigate the trees or, you know, vegetation with a certain radius around the buildings. But from what I understood, we have a choice of not, um, participating.
So, so they made a law, excuse me. They made a law and allowed us to opt out of the law.
Oh.
Is that correct?
Well, I don't know if it's a law. I think that it was just a
It's a bill. It would, it's a law. So was it a bill if I'm understanding what you're talking about?
I understand bills one sixty-six and double oh five. So they passed and they are.
And the other thing, just Matt, to get my head back around it, my apologies. Um, so is this the one that they were talking about, then the fire districts may have to take that responsibility to verify?
Yeah. Well, I think that the counties had the choice of having the fire district be involved.
Do it. Okay.
Cause a lot of counties such as ourselves, let's, let's say we did participate in it. We don't have the ability, right, to, uh, from what I understand, we don't have the ability to go out and, and figure out, okay, what needs to be removed, what doesn't. How this looked for, when, when I talked to Garfield County about it was is that prior to a building permit being issued, the home would need to be marked out. And then somebody from the county would have to go out and then mark all of the vegetation around a certain radius, right, to figure out what that is for fire mitigation. And that, that would be problematic for us because we don't have the expertise for that. So therefore that would be a new FTE or part-time employee. Or you could contract those services through the fire department or whatever. Yeah, items two and three, there might be, uh, uh, yeah, so we'll, I'll read one verbatim. It says, as of now, there is no consequences if a local governing body does not adopt the WUI code.
And where are you reading that from?
This was an email exchange that went back and forth between the, uh, the conservation district, the state, and whether
And when was that being in?
April twenty-first.
Twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, that's correct.
Can I interrupt really quick?
Yes.
So CCI actually talked about this last Friday. And one of the commissioners that sat on this task force for the WUI said that, so what I understood it to be is that we, we do have to adopt them, but and, and this is what she said to do, is to turn it over to the state. So the state, kind of like, and they were talking about electricians and plumbers, where the state would have to step in and take over it. They didn't talk about opting in and out. And I can double check with her. I'll, I'll give her a call. But my understanding is that we do have to abide by these, by this bill, but we can turn it over to the state like we do with the plumbing and electricians and so on and so forth.
Um, Jennifer, uh, we can read, uh, line item three from this email. Go ahead, Matthew. If this came again from that discussion in April regarding that very topic, I do believe. Go ahead.
Yep. It, it, and it, it says, and I quote, "If the local jurisdiction does not have the personnel to enforce the state WUI code, then this will fall"
then this will fall onto DFPC's staff." This already happens in regards to schools, hospitals, other occupancies that currently have statewide codes. Now, the procedure for that is, I do not know.
What is?
That's if we adopted it. That's if we adopted.
Yeah, right now, the option is, but don't adopt.
Yeah, and I, then I go back to that line item one where it says, "We have the ability to not adopt it."
Right now.
And that's directly out of the bill.
That's what I need to clarify.
We don't know that directly out of the bill. It was an email, so, uh, we need to look at the bill.
And you, or, you know, some...
Yeah, can you forward that? It said, "The bill," you know?
And which one it is, if it's the oh, twenty-four oh oh five or twenty-three one six-six?
Some option of the statewide codes. But I gotta be honest, when I first was reading, you know, when we were, um, when we were reading all of these emails from Vanessa to us, um, she was in contact with the state. And it was like the very last email that she sent. When I saw that line item one, I'm like, whoa, that's, that's easy. We don't have to adopt it at this time.
At this time, that's the problem.
And what would concern me though is that we're relying on another agency.
Interpretation.
So, let me...
We need to get at the bills.
I will find out the bills and...
Yeah.
It appeared, and the reason why I'm wondering is because I don't know that... Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
So, CCI actually is, is, will be voting on being, so, we have a county running a bill that is opt, is wanting to opt out of doing these codes because they don't have building codes. And so my understanding is that coming up, that we would have to adopt them. And therefore, we, a-again, turning it, we can turn it over to the state. And this was a Boulder county commissioner that said, and who sat on this task force, that said, "My recommendation is that every county turn it over to the state." And so, mm, again, what I walked away with is eventually we are going to have to adopt these codes. And unless this bill passes that they're trying to run, that we don't have to, especially those counties that don't have building codes.
Yeah, I was in a meeting with the Delta County Commissioner and they are really confused because they don't have building codes. And so they're looking into how this affects them.
So, when I talked to Garfield County, then one of the reasons why Garfield County adopted this WUI code is because they saw that in the future, if they were to have to adopt that code, then they would have to amend their building code. And if they amend their building code, then we all know what happens to the energy code. So, that's why they adopted it early on, so then they can have kind of control over it. Um, yeah, Doug, you're, Mr. Overton, you are correct. I- if we do have to at some point in time, it could create a little bit of an issue with amending our building codes.
That, and that, and that's the thing, I think, if we include it in this letter, I think we need to follow that path and make the issue, make the point, that not only is it costing money here, or maybe it doesn't because we turn it over to the state, but if we adopt it, then it causes us to have to change that code, which then does that code actually cost us, or is that just making life miserable for, and very expensive for anyone to build a home? Is that, is that the only ramifications of changing that building code? I know, but, and we need to make that point.
Yeah, some of the ramifications that, that I considered while reading this was the devalue of certain properties. Somebody goes out and buys a property because they have wonderful, beautiful trees and they have all of this vegetation on their property, to where then say they mark out a house, somebody comes in and says, "You have to remove, you know, everything of value." That, that's an issue. I think that the problem would be the neighbor didn't have to, you know, so these two neighbors can have all these giant trees.
So, existing, there's no enforcement on existing.
I don't believe so.
I don't remember that it was.
Not that I know it. I, now, I'm only speaking on behalf of the building department, so I don't know how that would affect, but, so I, I think that you have two things. You have the, you know, you're devaluing property, number one. Number two, um, you have, it possibly be an FTE, uh, that would have to go out and, or e- even if, say, I would have to get certified. Well, you, then there's all kinds of fire certifications and all that stuff.
And, and it just adds FTE because we don't have, we're busy enough, we can't take on stuff like this.
Yeah.
Um, so just, it sounds to me like that we need to research this and figure out what it says and what obligations we are going to have. And then we can come back and discuss it or educate ourselves on where we're at with this bill.
Yeah, cause I, like I said, I'm hung up on line item one.
It says it's not.
When that line item one says what it says, then I think that that's an easy, that's easy for us. We can always do what ifs, right? What if, later on down the road, but as of right now, that's how it stays, so.
So, unless somebody has objection, I think we move on to the next bill.
And just one more, one question, please. Um, when you say we should do some research, who are we?
Who are we? That's a good question. I'm gonna turn that over to our administrator.
Um, well, probably, it is, um, it was Dawn. He's out until the fourth, though. Um, just to make sure from a legal standpoint that, you know, what we're getting is, is consistent with the information that you've gotten before, which I, I'm sure it sounds like it is. But I don't wanna make that kind of legal determination. Um...
Sounds like Jennifer might have some insight too.
Right, yeah. He's gonna double check with the commissioner, with CCI. Cause I did see that on that agenda. Right. So, I think maybe that's it. And then if we can, I'll circle back with you too and say, is there anything else that, you know, based on that? I, I think you're right. I think it, it looks like that. Um, so...
Also for added information, we were not the only ones in that email. Uh, the town of Meeker was also involved in that email. Uh, Mandy Etheridge also had comments. Uh, they don't have the staff with the ability to do it either. And then also, um, Chief Paloney was also involved with that email. And he as well said, "We don't have the staff with the ability to make those decisions at the local fire department level."
Same with fire chief in, uh, Grand Valley.
Okay.
So...
Perfect.
So, uh, um, when we're doing that, I, I would also like to find out in there if there is the tripwires or when we might have to do it, if there's anything hidden in the bill like that. But if we do something, we have to adopt them or see, see what the, uh, I, I can't believe that they would do something like that and not hit us later.
Well, and here's my concern, if I might, I should have just jumped right in. Um, historically, the county's been very reluctant to say, to turn control over to the state. And so, in this instance, it, do I understand that we're saying, um, and I've, I've done some, a little bit of quick research. Um, so we don't have to adopt it, and if we don't have the personnel to enforce it, then it automatically defaults to the state's division of fire protection and control, DFPC. So, are we confident that, a- and I guess what I'm saying is, is that a conscious decision that we say, "We're not gonna put any funding towards hiring someone internal" that would be able to maybe work with landowners or do more, I don't know, you know, be grinnlier type thing versus turning it over to someone from the state? So, i- is that the decision that you're, you're not making today, you're not making it?
Right, but, but I understand what you're saying, and I also would like to know how that, if the state does come in, how is that going to, uh, mechanically or physically, how is that going to affect our building department? And is that going to give them authority over our building department?
I, I, I was thinking the very same thing as you were speaking. Well, we wanna make sure what doesn't happen here is if the state does have the authority to go in, can they revoke building permits because X is not done? We gotta make sure that that is not kicking.
Which is, uh, to Vicki's point, we wanna be very careful about turning anything over to the state.
So, also a point of clarification, as I'm looking up this bill, if I'm right, Senate Bill twenty-four dash zero zero five, right?
Yes.
The title is prohibit landscaping practices for water conservation. That's not the bill we're talking about. This one is talking about turf. The, um, artificial turf. So, I think we have a wrong bill number.
So, try one sixty-six, twenty-three, one sixty-six. Well, that's an old one.
Three would be an old bill.
Yeah, that's...
There was a bill this year, I thought, and I looked twenty-four or twenty-five dash oh oh five, and that was not right either. So, let me do this.
No, you're, you're, so that bill, take the, take the WUI out of it, that bill would cost a lot of money. You know, I, I think you're right. I think there's something going on with the title to that bill.
Uh, SB twenty-five one forty-two. It, it says, "Changes to wildfire resist resilience, vote for and WUI definition." So, Senate Bill twenty-five... One four-two. One forty-two. Um, signed on June third, establishes a statutory definition of WUI. There we go. That's the bill. Land within three miles of a city. Excludes single structured parcels over thirty-five acres, not adjacent, adjacent to residential, commercial zones.
Did you say land within three miles of a city?
Uh-huh. Or less than a hundred thousand people.
That is the correct one.
That, this, there's a, there's a, so there's a mistake in this.
Mistake in county letter.
Yep.
Okay.
Twenty-five one four-two. Um, and then there is also... Okay, so there's that one, and just a synopsis of it. Um, establishes a statutory definition of a WUI broadly, land within three miles of a city, less than a hundred thousand people, transient-oriented community, or zoning allowing forty-unit acres. Excludes single structure parcels over thirty-five acres, not adjacent to residential, commercial zones. directs all counties to produce their own WUI maps by July twenty-twenty-sixth and submit to the state wildfire board. Um, and if you don't, then it goes to the defaults to the, um, DFPC. Then there's another one that's House Bill twenty-five one zero zero nine, vegetative fuel mitigation and fire districts. I don't know if that affects us. Authorize a fire protection district or metropolitan district to establish vegetative fuel mitigation programs for private property. I don't know. That is another.
Well, I think the biggest question there is, does that line item one, if you choose not to adopt, then I, I don't see the issue. If we're not adopting, if we have the choice to not adopt, all of that is...
If it's, if it is...
Tied to that thing, though.
Yes.
If it is as simple as that.
It, right. If their words mean...
Maybe change that.
Should, yeah. Okay, so we're going to look into that a little more. Let's, uh, talk about the House Bill twenty-one twelve eighty-six, Energy Benchmarking and Building Performance Standards.
I believe that that bill is the one talking about, is it the windows, the window penetrations? Do you know? I'm not familiar with that bill.
No, we'll figure it out. I should have given you this letter.
That's okay. I'm sure I've read it. I'm just not...
Um, Energy Benchmarking and Building Performance Standards, HB twenty-one twelve eighty-six. I'm looking at.
This is the one that says, uh, "Commercial multifamily and public buildings, fifty thousand square, square feet or larger."
Do you think they have those? Have, have fifty thousand square feet, is that?
It's large.
I think like their, I think the House bill was affected by this one.
Mostly in the city limits, though. Anytime you're gonna build a building like that, it's generally in the city limits. Um, I say that, a- and I'm sure the weather, gas industry builds larger ones for certain needs, enterprise gas lines, so on and so forth. Um, but generally speaking, an industrial building or a commercial type building will be all within the city, but generally speaking. I can't imagine the last fifty thousand square foot building we had. Well, and you gotta remember, hospitals, schools, those sort of things fall within the state standards anyway. Different, so it's totally different.
Probably wouldn't affect us at all then on this one.
It might, but again, it's one of those what ifs.
Now, at what point are we? So, when we redid these buildings here, would that have, uh, if we would have redone this, let's say this courthouse building was one that, um, we're gonna do the whole remodel here. I mean, I mean, they basically took it down instead. That would have affected this building.
In the town of Meeker.
In the town, in the town of Meeker.
Okay. That's the, that's the ticket. You know, one of the, one of the things that we have to try and understand here, yes, we are on the two thousand six building code. Ninety percent of all of our buildings that's happening right now in Real Blanco County are built to the two thousand fifteen and up standards from the engineers and the architects, as it is anyway. The reason for that is because the software program is so old that the engineers...
It doesn't go back that far.
Yeah, they, they either don't have that software program anymore, or it's obsolete. So, they build to a higher standard anyway, and that's happening all throughout the county. Right. So, very, very, very few times are we building a new residence or commercial or industrial building to the two thousand six standard. It is always going to two thousand fifteen. The design of that is always to the two thousand fifteen plus. Is the, is the, this question, industry and commercial buildings are a separate code, is that correct?
Uh, same code, two thousand six.
It's the same code.
Yep.
Okay. Making sure I understood that right. So, we are, we have two thousand six code. Okay. But the reason where it appears because that's too old, obsolete. So, our engineers are just not going back that far.
Exactly correct. Yep.
I just wanted to make sure. Did I hear that?
But if we have, if someone comes, has a problem with something the engineer is doing or something, you and the engineer agrees to it, you can't afford it. You can't enforce anything more than the two thousand six.
That's correct. Yep.
But the, you have to, first hurdle is to get the engineer to agree to it.
Yeah, and so, my inspections are, yes, to the two thousand six standard. However, I'm also inspecting to what the engineer has designed, so...
Cause it's been approved.
Because it's been approved. So, that's, that's my inspection criteria. And I do have the two thousand fifteen books and all of that stuff, so, but it, it is, um, as long as, as long as it is more restrictive than what the two thousand six is, then we...
So, somebody that goes out here and builds a house that doesn't involve an engineer or, or does a project that doesn't involve an engineer, that's where this...
It is. So, if it doesn't involve an engineer, you're typically looking at a shop or a garage or an outbuilding. Or a garage or an outbuilding, or it wouldn't be a house. That has to be engineered, so. Um, at that point in time, the design code criteria for energy is not. An issue because it's it's a storage. At facility.
And it said that Matt is the one that requires it to be engineered.
That's right.
So where did where do you where do you fall back on that? Where is that, that it has to be engineered?
Uh, we do have a resolution. Where residential buildings need to be engineered. Um.
It's it's not a state statute.
It's not a state statute.
And it's not in the building codes.
No, um, that's correct. We have, we have the codes that can show us. So let's say somebody wants to, I have one right now. Somebody wants to build an on onto an existing barn or garage. Then we're not requiring engineering on that. However, what then I have to do is go through and make sure that the snow loads and everything are adequate. Crosssteps are adequate. That's where the codebook comes in. Um, so we are very lenient on engineering of certain structures, right? Where I do not, um. Where where I do require engineering is residential, industrial, commercial. And we have guides, so I ICC actually. Uh, put together packets on if you wanna build a deck. Here's how the standards are. We have pamphlets for that. Um, so it shows you exactly the distances, the.
Yeah, I just don't wanna get to the situation. Or forgot uh lean to on his back porch, so he doesn't have to go get an engineer.
Yeah, so what what I do is I. Interview is the wrong word, but I have like a pre-application meeting. And when and I kind of. Judge that person and their ability to. Know what they're doing, and if they have absolutely no clue what they're doing whatsoever, then I would. Strongly recommend engineering. That way they have a blueprint, they have a guideline that they go off of. If if we were to set that guideline for them, you're talking days of design. To the code, which we do not have that kind of. So that's, that's kinda where we're at.
Okay.
So twenty one twelve eighty six, we're saying does not. Fall into our. Should not be a part of this letter.
So. Let me ask that question, Kelly. That's a good question. This letter is going to say that we. Uh, excuse me, the intent of this letter. Is to say that we will not follow, or we do not appreciate this, or what?
The intent of the letter is to push back at the state for pushing all of these laws at us. That is. Costing the county money and the state just makes laws to. Uh. Make laws.
So maybe that could be the content of the letter, not specific each one, because we don't know if these are gonna cost us down the road.
I think we do have some. And that's so, cause I I wouldn't be above putting the one in here, the website. I mean, look at what that costs the county. We know what that costs the county. Because that was an unfunded mandate. Now, they have backed off of it, but that's, it's still coming. And we've spent hu- two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars or whatever. I mean, we've already figured that out. I think we wanna find those examples. And say. And that's what we were trying to do here, is find examples of where it has. Will actually cost us. So another one would be, and again, we talked about the sheriff's office, sorry, kinda handle and theirs. But the one about the gun.
Double O three.
Double O three. I mean, look what that's gonna cost the sheriff's office. To have the number of people come through. If they're gonna be law abiding citizens. How many of those we have?
And this is in conjunction with our. Counties.
Right.
I wonder their list.
And the uh they they include these for one, right? But I guess the thing. Um, the other issue, I mean, and I don't know, but what maybe we consider putting it in here. And we're kinda getting at the same thing, but when you look at the bills that are being passed. Um. Even for the state's budget, they are not. Being very accurate in how much it's gonna cost the state. Then, but that's their, I mean, to a certain extent, that's their problem. I've already checked with C C I and. Nobody wants to run that bill or do anything about it, because they say there's already mechanisms in place to try to enforce that. But the one that I think C C I might do in the future is just this. The. They're doing these bills and they don't even consider what it's costing the county. We're just gonna, you know, the county's gonna have to do it. So it didn't cost the state anything. We're just sending it to the county, but they don't have to. Look at what that costs. And so I think this is the first step. In that direction of saying enough's enough. We don't need any more unfunded mandates.
And and to. Answer your question about the other counties, some of the counties are backing away from double O three because they have. Uh, Rio Blanco counties were good with that. They might have some constituents that don't agree with that, so they're not.
And I'm not sure Matt and Lee would necessarily have any uh input on that. Double O three was the measures to address law enforcement. Accountability. So I mean, I don't know that you would have seen that.
Yeah.
Well, it was the the gun rights bill, right? It was the one that was requiring people to do. To go through training in order to get a. By a certain.
Yeah, I was. The intent of this letter is a collective collective letter. Or notice to the state on behalf of a group of counties.
Yes, we're all sending a letter.
But we're doing individual letters. And I guess that's where my concern is. Um. Uh, you know, kind of one of the things like with the wooey and potentially with this one, I mean, right now, we don't, like I said, have any huge. You know, fifty thousand square foot. Things in the county, we could eventually, um, but like with the wooey one going, looking at that one, um. By turning plumbing over to the state, the state charges the person, what, fifty bucks?
It just depends on the application.
You know, so saying that, you know, we, you know, we turned other things over to the state, which is, wanna make that point. There are very times when we turn that up, we're electrical, we have no choice. Plumbing, we opted to turn that back over to them, and it charges our constituents fifty dollars an inspection. Or it would have been way more expensive for us to do that internally. Could you see D F P C then coming back and saying, well, we're gonna do these inspections from Rio Blanco County, but it's gonna cost your people, your constituents. I'm gonna build a home here. It's gonna cost your constituent now. A hundred dollars or ten thousand dollars. I mean, I, you know, again, I get, and that's the same thing with. Any other programs, we're kind of at their mercy to set that fee. Now, so far, they've been very reasonable.
Well, so let's go back to the we just real quick here. So how that works right now, and I'm not gonna quote the county because I'm not exactly sure on which one I talk to. How this works for them is prior to. So prior to establishing a building permit. They go out and they they block off, you know, they put laps up. And mark out the the area of the home. A state official comes in, marks the trees. Or whatever, vegetation. Where this is hung up. Where it does involve the county is that according to the state. According to the wooey code, or however you adopted. A certificate of occupancy is not issued until those are removed. So that does affect us directly. Cause we're the ones then withholding that certificate of occupancy. That's something to keep in mind. Meaning if we do hand it over to the state, right? To do these markings or whatever, not only are they probably gonna build a constituent. But then we are not able to or issue a certificate of occupancy until those have been removed. Again, that's if you adopt it, right? If you don't adopt it. Which according to line item one. Does that? Fall into that responsibility? I don't know the answer to that.
And to add to that, in either case, it's not a financial burden on the Rio Blanco County. It might be a time burden.
Yeah, perhaps.
But it's not a financial burden.
Correct.
Well, that's. But that's my question. In that law, we need to research that and see if that says that you they, do they have the legal right to stop you from. Issuing a building permit.
Yeah, that's right.
And if they, because that's a little overreach.
Yeah. It it all falls on, I I can't say it enough. It all falls on that line item one. What does that mean? If you don't choose to adopt it. Does that mean that all of this is just? No, with no consequence. With no consequence. I mean, that's what it said. That's what it said. So. Now, in three years from now, could that change? I I don't. I don't have a crystal ball, unfortunately.
We deal with it when that happens. Yeah, we deal with it when that happens.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Fight like crazy at the Capitol to address that.
Yeah, so I apologize. I took us back down.
Okay, so let's move on to uh. House Bill twenty one twelve fifty, which is the cameras for the. Sheriff's Department for uh policemen.
Commissioner, are you done with the building department?
Yes. Thank you guys. I'm sorry, I should have asked, deferred to you guys, but I don't see that.
Others to test and discuss, so.
Yeah, of course, if there's anything else, just choose. Yeah, let us know what you come up with. You know, we're done for.
You got it.
Thank you, guys.
That should be, that one should be pretty straightforward. That costs us a lot of money.
Um, just for example, it's estimated, so Mesa County is estimating that it's gonna cost them. Staffing for data compliance of eighty thousand, body worn camera storage, cloud storage, additional licenses. Forty to sixty thousand, legal policy implementation of the attorney attorney and command staff. An additional twenty thousand, so a total of one hundred and forty to one hundred and eighty thousand per year. Of course, they're a much bigger county than us, but. I think some of those are just hard costs. No, I kid one or ten. I think you're still gonna end up with some burning.
So are we? Are we gonna try to attach a cost limit, a cost estimate like that to our?
I, we can.
I think we should.
Don't know.
Yeah, and if we do, then we need to be talking to Anthony about this one.
Definitely, but in his purview of what that would cost. Do you know if the sheriffs were aware of this?
No.
Action? Okay.
No, no, I didn't. No.
You'll reach out to him and.
Yeah.
Um, actually. I'm thinking instead of me reaching out, that that would probably be Lynn, wouldn't you think? That that would be within Lynn's purview since. I'll work with you on that. Um, don't you think that would be a better option, measures?
Yes, well, it's uh you're, not only is it a better option, but you're the administrator, so.
Kelly, are you thinking? Yeah, and pondering, sorry, I'm pondering. If that fits into. That communications piece. Yeah. I think together. And Doug, you'll need to help her understand more specifically where we're going with it and so forth, I think, unless maybe you feel more comfortable than I do.
Well, I can, I can, I'm sure. Go with your.
Yeah, I can too. I have no, I just think that that's maybe that transition.
Peace. It might be good, just early on, so.
Yeah, so uh. Moving on, and Kelly, are you more up to date on this O I T twelve thirty six?
Well, is that the website one?
No, it is not the website. It does not have to do with our, with H B twenty one, 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 zero. This has to do more with um security software tools. Um, penetration testing, this is a lot of what Trevor deals with. And how much we, in fact, um, you know, their budget that they've spent, I believe. We have already done the majority of these things, um, because we have a phenomenal I T department. Um. But I think I would need to. Um. For instance, let me just give you a, for instance, uh Trevor and Dylan and. And Eric, I'm not sure which one of the three of them coordinated. A meeting with the Homeland Security O I T, um, people like uh. I T people about security and risk. We had an audit. They went through and said, okay, well, you know, are you doing this? And we said, yes, we're doing this, or no, we're not doing that. So. I think a lot of this has been addressed in that. And one of the things we talked about, incident response and planning exercises. Um, we talked with that actual following underneath the emergency manager. Um, that particular issue, there's two different pieces to it that if we have a fire and it kicks out all of our communications, how do we get things back up and running? So a lot of this. They already be included that we're doing in other places, although this this now is mandating it under twelve thirty six, but I. Think we've got a good grasp on it, but I would definitely need to work with I T and say. Are we already doing this and how much more would we have to do to meet this?
So O I T is Office of Information Technology, just for the record.
And so the state's setting those, basically those requirements. Again, we've been very proactive in Rio Blanco County, so you've been incurring a lot, I think, a lot of these expenses, cybersecurity awareness training. We've been doing that for a long period of time, again, because we've been aggressive on that front, so I don't know if it's gonna be necessarily an additional cost. It is ongoing cost. But I don't know, I don't wanna speak for I T and say that we are doing all of these things. But I believe we've been doing the majority of them. And paying that expense already. But it does not have anything to do with our. Accessibility, E D A accessibility. Which again is another unfunded mandate.
So. I'm gonna back up just a little bit. There's a Colorado revised statute, twenty nine, one, three, oh, four, point five. Plainly states that when the state increases the level of services required by law. It must also provide adequate funding. If it does not, such mandates are not binding, they are optional.
What was that statute again?
Twenty nine, page one, page three, oh, four, point five.
We could tell me something about the mayor.
Yes, they did. That's where I'm reading.
Okay.
That's what they're hanging, everybody's hanging their hat on is that this. The state is. Breaking the law. And I'm sure there's others that affect Rio Blanco County more than just what we.
Yeah, it's the same.
Have discussed.
And I'm not that familiar with them, like I say, I'm just so frustrated with the. Website one. Obviously, I'm hung up on that. But I think we need that listed in here.
And they pulled it back, but there's still.
Because it already has cost us X number of dollars, and I think we we've already had that figured out. I would like to have that in.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Um. So I mean, I think there's some of these that are not affecting us as much as they, like the Mesa County, that. The building. Those big buildings, I mean, that impacted Mesa County, but not us, so we can pull that one out of here. Um, the wooey code, I'm really confused on that. I I we just need to get that researched.
Yeah, yeah, we do. And we need to know more about that before.
Yeah. Um, this demographic and that was Anthony, and then the O I T one, is that one? Um.
Probably have numbers on that.
Yeah, if they can. Yeah.
Well, and I guess that's, so what I'm thinking is we break it into. Little more biteable pieces. So again. I think you're right about the twenty one, twelve eighty six. Um, that's one for the the fifty thousand square feet, that that at its time doesn't affect us at that point, so. Leave it out. The. Um. Having to do with the um. Sheriff's Office, law enforcement, excessive accountability. Enforcement and Accessive Accountability and Transparency Act, which is twenty-one, twelve fifty. That'd be a conversation between Lynn, Doug, myself and the Sheriff's Office and have them put together those figures and say, is this, you know, what fiscal impact is this gonna have with us? To determine that, you know, because I, I think that was probably a pretty immediate significant impact. As far as the woo-ee. That one, I think probably have maybe Dawn do a, you know, it's up to the commissioner's direction. Have, um, the attorney review that and go back through that and say, yes, this does impact Rio Blanco and here's how we impact Rio Blanco if you do this, then that. And then we can get with the, um, Community Development Department, say, what would it cost to do this, then that? That might clarify that point. Um, A D A, we've got the existing costs and they backed off on a lot of that, but I still see that, as you do.
It costs us that money.
It costs us that money already, and I think it's gonna cost us going forward because I don't think they're gonna let it drop. I think they just slowed down the train a little bit. They pulled the train back a little bit.
Because they couldn't get.
Because they couldn't do it, but that's gonna still, again, continue to be pushed. I think that's an agenda that's gonna, I could be totally wrong on that. Um, and then the O I T compliance, I can take the lead with this one and talk with our I T. And we can put together the figures we've already spent on it. But again, I think this has been, over the years, our I T department has been very proactive. I'm not sure that it would necessarily. I don't see them as giving up anything that we, that they currently have us doing just because they believe that it is for our safety to do these things. I think a lot of this has already been budgeted for and continued to be budgeted for. So that may not be something that we need, we need to put in the letter because we agree with this. And I think it's one of those things, we've been up here doing these things and funding and working on it. And they're just now coming, the state's now just coming up to this level where a lot of counties may not be there.
They leave that to a county that has, that's not there.
It's not there.
Complain about.
I truly believe our I T have been up on all this, but I'll find out and identify if there's something that they say, no, we are not doing that and it's gonna cost us a million dollars to do it.
And, and, and any other, I would invite any other, uh, bills that we can think of or anybody else can think up to add to this that we can. The, the object of this is to, to, uh, support the other counties in this.
As well as.
As well as our own. But I think that more, the more, uh, letters that the state gets or the legislators from counties makes it less of a whining and more of an issue.
Yeah, if the wolf thing was a bill, we could add that up, but it wasn't a bill.
Well, and theoretically, does that cost the county anything? I mean, if you, you, you're not budgeting currently.
The amount of time and travel expense that we've dealt, trying to deal with it, I think we could add that up some.
Some way. Want to fight that.
From the policies.
It's not like this, a lot of these where it is, you will do this.
I agree.
You know, it's more of that, you know, fighting this, we're having to do this. But if you didn't fight it, it wouldn't cost you anything, right? If we wouldn't have fought so hard, we wouldn't have had to gone to, uh, Canada to get the wolves, right?
So, um, I might look at this again and see if there's a way that we can incorporate some language in here about. I, is this an opportu, I guess that's the question, an opportunity to just make a statement as well that as the, um, they call the folks that do the fiscal notes. We just make a request that they look into what any bill in the future is going to be costing the counties. They need to look at that as well. Can we incorporate that in here? Or are we getting, does that stretch it out?
I think that you, I don't know, but I think you could mention that we don't think they're being fair when they're doing that anywhere. They're skipping a lot of that out and, and they're, they're fudging on, on that stuff that they need to be doing anyway. And we could just ask them, uh, to please do it.
And we need to look, I'd have to go back and look at the bills that, the bills that we choose to list. We should look at the fiscal note on them and see what they indicated their fiscal note was gonna be as well, just for good measures, so.
So can, can, can I interject here?
Go ahead.
Um, so this has actually been a conversation with C H S D A. Um, as far as them looking at what it's gonna cost the state, but not the counties. And so there is a bill going to be ran through Human Services, through Larimer County that is asking that, that they not only look at what it's gonna cost the state on those fiscal notes, but the counties as well. And, and I, the conversation that was around that was if we can get this bill through for the Human Services, then does that open it up across the board? So this conversation is happening and has been happening, but it, it has always just looked at the state and what it's gonna cost the state and not us as counties. So I, I guess fingers crossed that this goes through and that they start taking a look at what it's gonna, what it's costing the counties as well. Because the unfunded mandates for Human Services, um, and, and they are gathering that information right now. Uh, C H S D A is on what it's costing the counties. For example, SNAP, um, as, as we all know, that's going to cost us some money. That, you know, our, our eligibility technicians are required to do, um, the legwork, so to speak, in getting, you know, that verification on jobs, so on and so forth, or rent, so, you know, all of those things. But it's, it's, how do we quantify what it's costing the county when that's, those hours um, that they're having to work on that case? So that is something that they're, they're trying to start tracking so that they can hopefully get this bill through. So just a tidbit of adding to that conversation.
So Jennifer, do you think there's any benefit or drawback to mentioning, mentioning that in this letter? Do we keep those two separate things or is this something that would could just add support to that, that they've already been hearing about it before session starts?
You know, let me ask, um, Larimer County that's running that bill and see if, if they're okay with that or if they wanna kind of lay, I know that they're working behind the scenes. I just don't know to what extent, and I don't want to hinder anything with them.
Right, yeah, that's what I was thinking after you said that. So, so yeah, if we can figure that and then you might think about and help how we might word that in here if they think it's a good thing.
I, I'll check with Heather, yes.
None of the, no other bills particularly come to my mind right now.
Yeah, I think for me, I'm just jumping back in there, Dan, I'm sorry.
Good.
Um, for me, it seems like a lot of the bills impact, you know, so much of it has impacted our oil and gas industry, which then affects our revenue streams. Because, you know, but then how do we say that's an unfunded mandate if they're gonna say like the air quality things and the water quality things and, you know, the produced water, all those things that truly impact us because the more expensive it costs industry where they have to pull out or they don't do that, that's decreased revenue to us, so that's costing us X amount that we could have applied to other things. So I don't know how we. Is that too convoluted?
I don't think that fits the definition of unfunded mandate. To me, that is, an unfunded mandate is, okay, counties, you will do X, Y, Z. And by the way, there's no money to do it. So I, I totally agree with what you're saying. It just doesn't fit the unfunded mandate definition.
That could be another letter.
Yeah.
And the letter could be about the state's laws are pushing energy production out of the state. And energy production is not going away, it's going to increase in the world. So by pushing it out of the state, they are hurting us monetarily and hurting the pollution that they're trying to stop because where they're gonna get the en, energy and imported into Colorado is ca, causing more pollution than the state of Colorado is, is doing. And that's the letter that, that you're talking about, Vicky, isn't it correct? They're two different letters.
They're two different letters, but I guess I, it kind of circled back to the same thing. If you have decreased revenues, you're gonna have a whole lot of unfunded mandates because you don't have the revenue.
Yes.
To do that, I mean, it's kind of like walking first, the chicken or the egg. But again, that's not necessarily for this letter, but that was just a, you know, what else is there? You know, and I don't know what other, to me, I'm not, haven't thought of any other mandates or unfunded. But it's kind of goes back to saying wolf thing, you know? We're having to, they said this is their budget for what is gonna cost to bring the wolf. Well, we've had to fight that, so it's cost us X amount of money, but they're not telling us that they want us to fight it, you know?
Exactly. I think we're good with.
So we're kind of wrapped up on this one and we'll research it and get a little bit better letter set up. And, um, Jennifer, are you okay with moving on to the next?
I am, yes, thank you.
Great. So let's, uh, move on to Lynn's, what is Lynn's official title?
I have the Public Information Coordinator.
Coordinator. So is that a, that is a P I C.
P I C, yes.
P I C, Public Information Coordinator. Write that down so I can remember it. Okay, so we need to, uh, get some clarification and give you some clarification on what your duties and what we expect from you, is that correct?
That'd be helpful and just priorities. Priorities like, um, do I, a lot of it has just been trying to get amplified, there's a lot. Um, but how much do I dive in and how much do I isolate myself and do web things? Knock the web out and then come back and reengage? Or do I do that? Do I just do it when I can?
First of all, have you had some conflicting stuff that we can? Since you've been here, that we can address or, or do you just, do you have, how do you want to a, address this?
I don't think so. I'm not sure what you mean by conflict.
I've just.
I don't think there's been any conflicting direction.
Good.
There's been just me coming from Fedland, which is all different. Trying to understand how things work, trying to work with the three of you, uh, and Vicky. And, um, trying to figure out how to navigate communicating with you, keeping Vicky in the loop. What's appropriate? How do I run chain of command? Yeah, just trying to figure that out, so.
And honestly, I've been struggling trying to get time to get with Lynn, not, you know, getting the budget, trying to kick that off and, and some of the other things. And that's not my, you know, not the way I wanted her to come in. I want to be able to sit with her and do some support and us work together on a lot of things and it just hasn't happened. And I apologize, Lynn, but, um, I think she's doing a phenomenal job, so I think it's one of those things that's just, you know, what is your, I guess one of the key things to me and, and Berlin also would be, what is your temperature as far as does she truly focus on the, the website? And whether that looks like a change or not, we, we really haven't been able to dig in deep enough. I mean, are your initial thoughts on that? Is it, have you had any time to say, I'd rather ditch this one and start a new one? Or I want to keep with one, or have you even had that kind of time?
I have been looking at that over the past few weeks. Initially, I was just like, ditch it, let's get rid of it, let's go. But I've really been looking at other counties' websites. And you know, yes, we can clean up a lot, but it's honestly not terrible. I mean, the organization to me makes sense, the way the pages are broken out. There's a lot of functionality that Civic Plus offers that we're not using. Um, so also they owe us a rebate. So I think if we wanted to tweak fonts or the overhaul look and things, that's included in what we're already paying them, which goes through June. So it seems silly to dump ship and have someone else revise it right now. I'd like to see, I guess, what they can do with it first. I also need to understand more about, um, what tools they offer for analyzing the website as far as is it accessible? And maybe I just ask Chat G P D, is this page okay? Is this comply with Colorado, whatever? But there's that. There are some, I also need to, um, kind of understand where the line is because as I'm cruising through other counties, I really like Summit Counties, how their interactive map is for, it seems like one of the biggest things that people want from our website is property. They want to be able to view the property and see the taxes and things like that. If you're looking at Summit County, it is a different format. It, it's not that it's an interior initially, but you zoom in on a plot, you click on it. And when you click on that, it brings up a page that we would already have to go through six or seven steps and explain to people. It brings you straight to that page and then a link has straight to another page that has all of the tax things. And it's just so much cleaner and it seems like the public service aspect of that would be really good. Cleaner, seems to be accessible, um, in my mind, so.
Is that getting into Renee's realm?
It is. Um, I think the, the, where, where the crossover is, is that that would be, you know, I, I, Renee wants the information out there and whether that's what she currently has or if there's a better way to do that. I mean, it may be, so what I'm thinking of is it may be the same provider, but our interface is different. I mean, I don't know that. I mean, I'm just saying because that, that's typically generated from, I know we have a contract that goes external. But again, that would be, uh, Renee and her conversation, the, the two of them sit down and say, well, do you like this? Or is this something you would rather have it look this way? And what, what would take the time of her staff, you know, take that piece off her staff? Because then, you know, they're not having to do that, then it saves the constituents because they're not, you know, having a hard time finding something. Um, now, there, Renee may have a reason that she says, no, this is exactly the way I want that, and that would be her call. You know, as an elected official to say, that's the way she wants her website to look. So those kinds of things take time to get and to dive into it and to break it down. I had a conversation with Rogue Bridge, um, Public Works earlier today, and one of the things that they're concerned with is the timing that they need to be able to get notices out of when the landfill, when the winds have changed, when it's up, when it's down. You know, we don't, because of the way the original bill, we took everything down, you know, prioritizing and maybe having like a, a meeting with everyone that says, you know, or those people that manage websites and say, what is the most critical thing you've got to have up on your website immediately? And then we could maybe prioritize that for Lynn to say, okay, help us get to this piece first. Another one of the Road and Bridge ones they would like to have is, um, you know, schedules on, for instance, mag chloride. Okay, so we're gonna be doing from this mile marker to this mile marker today. Well, we can't put that out in the newspaper because by the time it gets there, it's gonna be too late. But it would be nice to say, oh, wow, we finished that early. So out on the website, we could direct people there and it says, guess what, we got really fast, so tomorrow we're gonna be doing this section.
Well, that, that's, that's what I am enthused about or, or is, is this Public Information's Officer or, or Coordinator. Getting information like that out there.
Pushing it out.
Pushing it out and pushing the correct information out on what stuff that happens here in our means and that kind of stuff. And, and, uh, yeah, that's, that's what I'm, I'm gonna switch just a little bit. Can you, where does this, uh, tax property owner's website fall within A D A? Because obviously a map is not A D A.
You know, and I'd have to look on that. I, I'd need to dig a lot more into it. I'd want to get with on. But to me, a lot of accessibility is, are people able to go to our website quickly and find what they want? And is it just spelled out or are they having to navigate and weave and are they getting misdirected to something that's outdated? So I would, in my mind, accessibility is, can I find what I want really fast without having to call someone? And can I trust that it's accurate?
No, I, I agree with that and that's a good, I like your, your goal. I, I like that. But that isn't the way that the A D A law is. The A D A law says that somebody that's blind need to read that. That isn't the way that the ADA law is. The ADA law says that somebody that's blind needs to read that map. And.
I guess that's the question. Have you dug into that law to to know what it what it? I guess, I don't know if it matters what it did say, but know exactly what we have to have done now. Because that that's number one, we gotta be sure that we're compliant with that or or we say we're not, one or the other. Because that's our option um here, and so I guess that's a that's called that we need to make. And if we're not going to, then we quit worrying about this ADA thing. I hadn't even thought about that. I mean, that, we just say we're going to quit worrying about it and. That'd be that, that'd be that. And and yes, with the common sense. Make it as ADA compliant as we possibly can and as you learn things and make it that way, but. Not have to be so freaked out about what. The law says.
And wait for the and wait for the legislature to catch up on this common sense.
Someday. Someday.
I'm just going. No, I'm just going by what I'm seeing on other counties. And um it's just all across the board, what I've heard from my county card of what I've heard over the past few years. Two years ago, they were all just crazy, just what are we gonna do, frantic, and over the past few months, they've been. You know, and we tried.
Yeah.
So I think if my gut is. We're demonstrating that we're working on it because I'm here. Also, my gut says we clean it up, we make it functional, we make it right. And accurate, I mean, so people can find what they need. And throughout this process, I will also be learning and integrating other tools so that. Um blind, colorblind and so forth are integrated now. It's worth noting that Summit County that uses this interface for property. Just had their new website published by Revise, who I'm meeting with this afternoon just to kind of go over things. Revise says that they guarantee that whatever site they turn over to you is compliant. Right now, whatever compliant means to whoever is judging it at that moment.
Exactly.
Um in the hearing. Yeah, it's. Um I was given, Renee sent me the link to the hearing about that and that was really enlightening. Because they couldn't even describe in the hearing exactly, you know, like make this, make this compliant. They couldn't even describe it there, so until they can do that, until they can say these are the exact parameters. I feel like we should just move on with our lives and do what we can.
I agree with you. I like that. That's 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 kind of what we instructed.
We're done with this.
When, yeah, so so that's, I like that, so good, so so uh let's do that. And let's move, go ahead.
So with that being said, and and I guess like sure Jennifer's on the same page, but I, yeah, I'm I'm with you there. Let's just, if it sounds like we can move on, let's just do that. The one thing that come to my mind when you're talking about the maps and stuff. I in addition to Renee, I I think Leaf may be involved in there somehow, so those may be conversations that you have there. I don't know.
I kind of started fishing. I think I've made them all a little bit nervous because. Um yesterday, I just sent a message to Leaf and Renee and said, what do you think about this? Is there a reason you use what you use?
Yeah.
Leaf immediately said, let's look Trevor here. Um Trevor just, you know, said more, there's all these more conversations, it's a lot of conversations. And I really don't want people to think I'm just gonna come and. Put things up.
But that's your job and that's why we hired you to do that stuff.
Have those conversations and see, do we need to change, you know, does it make sense to change and what of course, so yeah.
It it seems to me like an opportunity to change and to go through some of the pain of changing if.
That's where I look at it too, an opportunity.
So did I understand you say that company you're meeting with this afternoon?
Revise, it's just another, it's just like Civic Plus is what we're working with. It's just like that. And at first, when I was looking at Summit County site, other than. I really like how easy their property search is. But it's all the same tools in a different package and I I would like to see what Civic Plus can do since we're already working with them and they owe it anyway.
Yep.
So. And simultaneously fish around and see what else is out there. We used to use something called Site Improve when I did the web for the Forest Service, that would go through. And tell me where the broken links were and um. There's some of that functionality in Civic Plus. There's a really useful page in there that shows exactly how many visits. Each webpage has gotten over the past year. So people tend to be very attached to their content and say, I have to have this up there because I get all these calls about it. Maybe, and maybe not, maybe it's been viewed twice in the past year, so.
Okay, there's the stat.
Yeah.
That is good.
Right, right.
I think one of the big things and and Lynn mentioned it, she touched on it, is that. You know, one of the critical things that we've done. Through app, you know, starting two years ago. Is to hire that position that's going to be able to focus more so on the website than as a secondary or third or fourth job down the road. So by having her in that position, what I anticipate happening now that now that the rules have really rolled back. And again, that was that May, end of May conversation that they said is, we can't meet this, so we gotta roll it back. Or we're having to meet just one criteria where before we had to meet four or five. Now we're having to meet one. Well, we could show obvious improvement to our website. I think they're going to continue to push that and grow. And at which point, you know, Lynn might have to say, you know what, based on this now, I think we need to do that. So I I think there's that that piece to it. And the other piece that I think that's just critical to this is that. As we clean those things up, like the maps are no really, you know, we've already done one thing we've hired, we don't have to make the maps compliant because we've got Lynn doing this stuff. Um. But the, you know, the concept of how much money we have to spend on that project. You know, is ratcheted down considerably than what it was. We still need tools. Lynn will will need to develop Lynn's budget because we are going to have to have some way to. Outside of Civic Plus telling us, oh, no, your website's fine, we still need to have a tool that will scan it and do things and say. Here's where I see you're having problems. Um you know, and then when a constituent calls and says. I can't see this because I'm blind and the colors won't change or or, you know, I'm colorblind and I can't see that or. You know, I need this turn to audio because I'm, you know, completely blind, whatever those those things are. We have Lynn to address that and say, you know what? Let me fix this and take care of that one particular situation. We're not having to go through and make a massive change for everything on the chance that someone's going to ask for it.
Agreed. I I think that makes total sense and. And so then the other two companies that we've been paying for, we're going to eliminate them.
I believe we can eliminate them. There's no re, well, again, I, in my opinion, again, I think this is a conversation and that Lynn. Will need to look at it and say, I need this tool or I need that tool. So I don't want to speak for her because she's going to be, she's more subject matter expert on that piece. So in my opinion, I don't see that happening. I don't see us needing to remediate. The PDFs to the level that we had to do before they changed the law. So that's twenty five thousand right there.
So I guess that it'll boil down to developing your budget.
Right, that's.
Where next year is where all that will come in. So have you, have you gotten in that loop of how to do all that?
Not.
Okay.
And I'm still, I'm still very much fishing.
Figuring out.
I like this, what is that tool? How much does that cost? So I'm kind of in the fishing stage right now. Um and some of them. I don't know, there's a whole lot of people telling a whole lot of.
Oh, yes, there is. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, I bet you get bombarded once you start looking at anything, so. And I know you've got those good connections with other county people, and so that's wonderful, yeah.
Good, so so just to move things along. Before we can determine the priorities, we need to have a list of duties.
And I think in her job description, we've got that to a certain extent. I didn't think about having that.
If we do, then can we prioritize off of that?
So I guess.
How do you want to do priority?
So I guess just thinking, keeping it real simple.
Like that.
I see website and I see communications helping us, letters. Whatever else that contains, I I don't know exactly what all a communication specialist does, but. But helping us communicate to the to the to the public, which by the way, also includes potentially the Facebook. Right? Because you've gotten into Facebook.
Yeah, you should get them on a deal. We're working, so Facebook, so I, you know, I contacted everybody that I could that was a former administrator. Get it done and so I just made another page. And then when I made another page, it went into the business side of Facebook and all of a sudden I was able to contact a person. And I think if I provide them. Um this list of things and a picture of my ID and so on, they might let me have access to the hold on. Which would be really great because it already has three thousand eight hundred.
Oh, awesome.
So if I can get them, Facebook would be helpful for things like you're talking about, like the, you know, it's like. Um the sheriff's office has a great following. We'll be working with Ronnie. But to push things that way too, I could have an official voice and put things on Meager Message Board. So there definitely is a place for Facebook and it can be useful and then.
Right, some other tools.
There's also the, how do we choose to use it? You know, are we going to um? Going to do things like, part of the reason I tried and was jumping getting back into it was it's fair week.
Yes.
You know, and so this is a perfect time for the, you know.
Getting it out.
Warm, fuzzy, hi, look, we're back and trying to get some of those things going again.
Yeah.
Um and I guess on some of the things that are more prone to. Insight and controversy, I would be more likely to. Do people to the website and then we can have a place to capture conversations and comments there.
Yeah.
Um we can do, we can do forums and that's one thing I've been curious about. Um. I didn't think in my previous position that I was able to do forums. Um just gathering information that made people nervous. Collecting information and putting it in a certain place. So I'd like to know from Dawn that we're good to go on all that and that that's not a problem.
I guess I don't know what what you mean by that.
Um. I thought I was being helpful and innovative at the forest one time and I made, I was doing a detail for the Carson National Forest. And they wanted feedback on the trail, so we did a QR code. That pointed to a survey that was like, hi, you know, what's your name? How was this? How was your experience? And um but that collected then information about that person. And that, for whatever reason, that triggered people on that side, but they can't use Gmail, they can't. Really liking what I'm seeing here so far, the freedom to use some of these things. So um Dawn isn't concerned about that and we have a lot of. Flexibility and ability to go forward with that. Um there's also a lot of value to, one of the things that I don't know if it was captured so much. In the job description, but there's a lot of value in presence and, excuse me, I'm talking so much of. By presence, I mean, it helps me so much to be in the room with you, to hear your concerns, to hear some of the background and context. And then also to engage on my own with PIO groups, with other. Community members, just to be out and present and taking pictures and. Just being, um there's, I think there's a whole lot of value in the space. So having the ability to do that, so um.
So just to clarify what you were meaning as far as the information collected, so you collect. So you were just kind of collecting who was on the trail and so forth, but you're not collecting addresses. I mean, you could say, my guess is, and and this is going to be a Dawn call, my guess is. You could ask like what, if you're from from within the county, outside of the county, or outside of the state or whatever, that kind of stuff, so you're not. Um.
You could also list that stuff as optional.
Right, exactly. And I and I think I'm good with that. I I always have been very sensitive about, we don't want. We don't want government having too much information about people.
You don't have to worry about that anymore.
They have it all, yeah, no kidding, but um just location and so forth. So I I'm anxious to see what you're right, check to see with Dawn what legally we can do and then. Just so that, I mean. How we might use that, if we would use that, other than, okay, we have a lot of visitors from. Uh Larimer County, you know, or whatever, that kind of thing, if that's helpful, is that what you were thinking?
In in their instance, they just wanted specific feedback and they were trying to recruit volunteers. So they wanted contact information so they knew how to get in touch.
Oh, so they didn't want.
So that was some P I I then and that is enough some triggers. So overall, it just, um it seems like we have a lot more flexibility. And I'm just prone to being conservative because of my eighteen and a half years of grooming. So, yeah, but there are some great tools we could do. One, Vicky and I were going to check in with this gentleman who said. That he can make a a video or something and then have a forum on there, so so one of you could go out and comment, you know, I could get all the now, we could talk. Whoever, we could have a short video and then um feedback, what do you think about this? Have a forum, we could get a lot of. Interaction and participation that way, so I want to see what he says about that because I don't know. I could do that without him, so I'm wondering what the value of his product would be if it's connecting to a larger.
Yeah.
Larger audience. Which, yes, um. Yes, I think there's a lot of value in video. People don't want, people don't want to read things. They want you to tell them in six seconds.
Yeah.
What you're going to do to fix things.
Need you all people.
So um you know, like the. Facebook or the homepage of the website can post little ongoing projects. Um. There's there's so much, so much potential, there's so much it could do. Uh if I were to say, what is my gut? My gut says that right now I should dive into the website and really focus on that and then keep. Kind of putting my toe in the water, learning about projects and people and things and um. Learning enough of the admin side, the letters and the running of this so that I can back up Chrissy and help with some of that. That's, that's my gut, but I would, yeah.
Jennifer, do you have anything to add?
I do. I am really confused right now because my understanding is that Lynn is under Vicky. But yet we're giving her directions, so I think we as commissioners need to be really careful with that, so we're not overstepping. The boundaries with Vicky. Vicky really needs to be giving her that direction. I get that there's going to be times that she's going to work with us. But getting into the weeds with some of these things is for Vicky to do. And unless I'm 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 looking at it differently and correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, that's was the next thing we were going to talk about was chain of command. So we need to talk about that is that I uh. I understand that giving direction to Lynn should come through Vicky, but I, we can't really. Somehow we have to have open communications. Kind of like we do with the directors, we have to, you know, we need information to do our jobs.
And if I'm not mistaken, Vicky, you had indicated that your impression was that, yes, she still. Answers to you, but she needs to have that connection to us. To be able to do the public. Information piece, not the web, I'd almost say the website piece, yes, makes total sense that it's more under you. But the communications and letters that we need written and so forth that way, how, I mean, granted. Well, let me back, let me give an example, so. Um. And and this is a big question, it's not a statement, it's a question. So for instance, this letter, okay, that we just got through talking about, um. Doug was kind of the lead in that. And working with Vicky, I think, is how it was, it was kind of before you came on or right when you come on. So that business of getting a letter the way that we want it. Is that going through Vicky yet? So Vicky's still having to play that. That middle person of, okay. She sends it out to the three of us, gets our feedback and then gives it to Lynn. Or can we do that directly with Lynn to take that off of Vicky's plate? Does that make sense as a question?
Well, that is my concern is is uh how much stuff? Do we load onto Vicky just because she? Uh let's see, how am I gonna say this? Just because she's there. Uh, let's see, how am I gonna say this? Just because she's there or? Or is it more efficient to work with Lynn on some of that and Lynn keep Vicky informed?
I guess the way that I see that, um. Unlike the other department and the department heads and directors and, and staff. Uh, where they've got that chain of command, this truly, the chain of command is a one-person thing. Um, you know, from you three commissioners, to me, to Lynn. However, she's speaking for you three and the timeliness of it. If you're, if it's waiting for me, I, and I guess that's maybe one of those authority levels where I could say. You know, Lynn and I keep in communication and if Lynn thinks that she's overstepping or, or, you know, and I'd say, okay. You know, CC me in on a conversation. If you're, you know, you're gonna say, I'm gonna give Lynn a letter, we wanna drop the letter that does this. I don't feel that's necessarily like staff direction like it would be. If you told Roden Bridge to plow a certain road, does that make sense? A little different chain of command it because they are speaking, she is speaking for you three as well as, as me, so I feel like that. Communication runs well. Now, you know, especially for the chain of command of, if you felt like Lynn wasn't doing her job. Or she was doing something that, you know, that. Conversation, I think, would come through me. But as far as the, we need to update the Facebook page and I want you to put it out that we're all gonna be at the fair tomorrow. You know, that would be something that doesn't make sense to run through me if I'm in the middle of something else. That can go straight to Lynn and she's making that call that says, I mean, she's not a new person in this, this venue. And that's the other thing too, we've got the benefit that she's got experience. In managing those kinds of things. If she feels like there's something that's an overstep, I think we can have that conversation. But tell me what you want this to look like, cause again, Lynn. Is here to be your, your voice and, and to drive that Rio Blanco County's public message and, and Gary Moyer. Um, one of the things that he used to say is we've gotta tell our story and, and that is kind of how this position needs to be able to be is. How do we give Lynn the freedom that she needs to do to help us tell Rio Blanco's story without creating more red tape? Thank you.
I, I agree with that and that's, that's, I think we have to have some faith and, and, uh. And that she's doing her job right. And, and if we, if we need some redirecting, we can come to you and, and do that if. So if she needs redirected, I think we need to go through you. If she needs, if she wants to ask me a question, I think she should be able to come ask me. If she has an issue. Uh, where the commissioners are in trouble or somebody needs. Uh, she needs a direction from all three commissioners, I think that might need to go through you. I mean, it, there's just different scenarios that I can see.
And I could see like with the Lynn immediately, um, got me involved when we have the request from NPR. Colorado Public Radio, thank you. So we were able to work together on that. So, you know, again, a public request from a, an entity is something definitely I should be aware of because that could, you know. Affect us in a lot of different ways. Um, so I think that communication is key. Between the three of you, the, and Lynn, because this isn't, this is definitely a different position and it's a learning curve. So we can make it look whatever the way it is that, you know, the board would like it to look, I think. You know, it's, it's a little different than a lot of the other pieces.
Well, and, and Jennifer, I, I know where you're coming from, but what if we set up some, some, uh, rules or, or, uh. If, if I, for instance, I'm just thinking out loud. If I need to ask Lynn a question or communicate with Lynn at all, I CC Vicky on everything. Is that good enough?
I, yeah, I, I would agree with that. I just don't wanna step on. Vicky's toes with her position. So I guess that's just where I'm trying to be careful because. And making sure that. Staff understands that, that Lynn is kind of in this in-between position with us, but. I, 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 but I saw, yes, I like that. I would, I would feel more, and I know that that's where I would feel more comfortable. So I'm not stepping on Vicky's toes.
Well, Vicky has a lot of responsibility to the three commissioners and if she doesn't know something's happening, it's not fair to her at all, so. Somehow we need to figure out a way to keep her in the loop, no matter what we do.
One of the things I have not done yet, which I'm, I need to do is Lynn and I need to have, I've started doing this with Chrissy and it works out really well, we just. Chrissy books it on my calendar, we spend an hour of time, I don't know that we've done it every week, but we're trying to get better at it because. I think if Lynn and I schedule that time, I'm getting interrupted. I know when I'm, and the same thing with you guys, you know, it's. It's so important for me to be able to take that time to say, what do you have on your list? And here's what's on my list and, you know. That communication is key and I think I just need to set that time, Lynn and I need to set that time so that we can go over those things. Again, she's got my cell phone, she'll call me, you know. I just heard that Night News is gonna do a special on us on this day and what do we need to do, you know, so that we can. Make sure it's rolling. It's definitely gonna be in, a new experience for me because this is definitely. We did have the public information officer physician before that reported directly to the board. Um, and, and even then there were some conflicts, I think, and I, so I think this administrator physician will help alleviate that so that. You know, I know what Lynn's saying, but then I can communicate with the other directors and say, hey, you know, we're gonna have this, this is where I'm. You know, this is where this is coming from, so it's not all of a sudden circumventing that, does that make sense?
Yes, so, uh, just picking up on that a little bit, the, the, uh. Chain of command then would be that we can work with her on certain things and keep you in the loop. What if a director wants to work with her? Should they come through you?
Um, I think, I think that same piece, the four directors or the elected officials, I think that needs to be a conversation we need to have to see how that works. Uh, I think that's a conversation between Lynn and I, if the sheriff contacts Lynn and says, hey, we're doing something at noon today, I need you, can you? Do something with that, whatever, or, you know. The assessors doing something, our treasurer's doing something. I think all those things are a communication. More than a directive that you will do this first and that second. I can see that being, you know, I definitely wanna make sure that it's involved, if it's any of the departments that are under my purview, which are under the commissioners. We need to be having that conversation that says, I would like to do this, you know. For instance, building is gonna have a rollout of something, of a new thing and it's gonna be in the newspaper. You know, that Lynn has that design and they can say, hey Lynn, I'm gonna be doing this, you know, Vicky, I'm gonna be doing this. I mean, I think I've got that communication with my directors right now, that they're gonna say. I'm gonna be doing that, I'm gonna talk to Lynn, perfect, go for it. And then just Lynn come back and say. Is this okay? Are, are we, you know, not getting into the weeds, are we not? Doing this or should we do that instead? I think we can have those conversations on a, one-on-one basis. Now, it may be a point where we have to pivot. Maybe we get down the road and we see, you know, something that is, needs to be addressed or changed. I think then we make. That assumption right now that there could be things we'll need to tweak in the future.
And I just, I appreciate having Vicky for that too. She provides a little bit of cover. You guys are all kinda on the same page, but if you weren't, um, I would be in a difficult spot navigating and so. Vicky would be just so essential to that. The other thing is our position, um, in my previous job. People get excited about things and everybody wants to come and give you something and. So it was nice in that position, we always just said, you know, go through. I would say go through Dave or in this instance, go through Vicky and I think he wants me to. Give energy to them, then that's what I do, so.
Cause that can happen all of a sudden.
Can happen, yeah.
Well, and I, I was sitting here thinking and so I'm gonna rely on you to, you know. When I come up with some wild idea that I want you to do, I need you, I need to rely on you and say, hmm. Maybe we wanna do it a little bit different. But get it out. Yeah, keep us under control, would you? But I do want to get, I, I think the face, and is there another platform? Facebook is the only one I use. And is that the right one for the county to be focused on and using and only that or do they do anything?
Useful for our locals, um, because everybody's looked in here with the sheriff and with Meeker message board. And so those are for better followers, if you need somebody to know something now.
Yeah.
They're very useful for that. Um, other platforms for other things, that's very.
First platforms, I'm just putting in input from like my kids' generation, they hate. They hate Facebook. The only reason they have Facebook is because nobody.
Cause everybody else does.
Communicates with Facebook. They would much prefer like an Instagram or something else like that, so, um, and I know. Their whole generation keeps telling me Facebook is for old people.
That's right.
Just you commenting on that, like, I just wanted to put that out there.
So Instagram needs pictures. I love Instagram. Instagram and Facebook are simpatico, they're both meta things. And what, what she says is important. Those are the young people, that is a much larger audience. But you're not going anywhere without visuals.
Right.
And so then. Am I out in field taking pictures? Are we encouraging other people to take pictures? It just, you need. Love Instagram, but we need visuals.
So I do a lot of pictures at meetings and everything else. Do you want me to send you those?
Well, not pictures of meetings, nobody but, uh, these.
Well, but topics, I mean. I, I don't know whether that's something.
You can always send me pictures and I can always choose not to use.
Right, exactly.
Um, that sounds great. Um, I could see for some of the more political things, LinkedIn. That is a broader, more professional audience. Um, I have never really had the ability to use it, but. We had a national level account that did some of that. And then just being present on that might help with recruiting. I know Vicky has said that. They were having a hard time recruiting and so that gets you out to a broader audience also.
Well, and I think, you know, where we go with this, particularly, so like with Facebook, one of the concerns that came up is. Whether you allow commenting or you don't allow commenting. If you allow commenting and you don't like the comments, you can't remove the comment. If you don't allow comments, then are you servicing, how, how are you getting, are you getting feedback from your constituents? You could have someone from out of country comment on something.
And you will.
And you will, if you allow comments. So those kinds of decisions, I think maybe, maybe not necessarily this. Meeting, but would be where Lynn pulls those things together, here's how inst-, you know, X works. You know, and if you want me to do stuff on X, this is the way that that would look. If you wanna do, you know, LinkedIn. How do the commissioners, again, this is your story to tell, how do you want that to look? Um, Facebook, again, that, that, that's probably the most easiest one for me to understand is. If you allow public comment, if you don't allow public comment, what does that look like, you know, either way? And you guys give us a direction and we say, okay, now we've got our direction.
And I, I do think that it's easy to get, I get so excited about all of these possibilities. Because I would love to be more than to be up taking pictures, promoting, getting all of that done. But without the bones of the website, if we don't have the basics solid. These are the bags that our community needs. Until that's really in place, I'm gonna kinda feel like I'm cheating, doing other things.
Agreed.
Um, to a large extent, so, so gonna kinda do some of it.
No, I would agree. And, and so, and again, we don't have to decide it today, but I just, in. Managing some websites with course issues and that kinda stuff. If you allow comments, you've gotta spend some time answering questions because people may ask legitimate questions. And if you don't respond, then they get frustrated over that. Or correcting information and that, so that eats up a huge amount of time that I don't know that you're gonna have.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and so right now. I'm, I'm not super concerned with it. If we can get access to that bold page.
Yeah.
That would be great because it has all the followers and the structure. It also came with an extensive policy. That, um, we can choose to leave in place or not. And the other thing is, we don't really have to. Post on it, but it would be nice to have that ability.
Yeah, I, I would like to as some, cause again, we gotta be able to tell our story and that's the best way to do it as fast. It's the fastest way to do it, I guess, and get ahead of questions and concerns and.
I like, I like what you're up to, but just a, a comment, if you ever gain access to that website. Make sure that somebody else is in there. We don't wanna lose continuity of that again. That's a problem we have in the county is we lose continuity.
I think one of the, the downsides to that is that you have to tie your personal information to it, correct?
Absolutely a downside. So the way Facebook works. They want to know that they're dealing with an authentic human, so. Me, I have stepped way back, Lynn will put in my personal Facebook page because. It's tied to a government site and it made me a big target. Um, so. I don't post very much, but I keep it just so I have it so that I can do other things.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there is a certain amount of liability there. And just it's hard to.
It is, it's uncomfortable knowing that, you know, you're having to, I'm speaking, you know, I'm, I. I have to put my personal information, access something for the county. It's gonna be the county's information. I wish that they didn't do that, but I understand the reasoning for that.
Can we get Donald Duck?
No. Unless you could get Donald. Don would say no.
Yeah, pretty much be, be somebody that doesn't use Facebook, but just has a, just has an account kinda thing, right?
I've stepped way, way, way back on the personal side, which is unfortunate, I mean, I, well, I always just. With the pictures of my kid or my job and so, and I was advised to separate.
Yeah.
My job from my personal.
Exactly.
That's gonna be really hard to do now here in Rio Blanco County where there's not very many people, so it's just another reason to just be. Quiet.
Yeah, be careful with it. Okay, well, you'll know that stuff better than us, so we appreciate that guidance.
Okay, um, have you got enough from us today or do you need some more?
It was a good discussion for me, I think, and, and Vicky can figure it out going forward.
Jennifer, do you have any more to add before we end this?
Nope, I don't, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I, I might just interject, going back to the previous topic. Um, I received a message from IT. And as far as the OIT compliance HB twenty-one twelve thirty-six, there was nothing on that list that they haven't already been doing. So again, like I suspected, they were already up on that. There might be, um, some. Assessments or tabletop exercises that they were already planning on or thinking on doing, but again. They were already in advance of that, so I think the others are playing catch up to us.
Thank you. Anything else we need to talk about today?
That I can think of.
Great.
Looks like Jennifer's out playing in the wind. Are you, are you in this, are you in a convertible or something?
No, I'm actually heading into the airport now. I get to go see my babies.
Oh, fun. Okay.
Good.
Have fun, enjoy, we'll see you when you get back.
Thank you.
Tomorrow?
Uh, isn't today, what is today, day's only?
Oh, not today, no, this Friday. No, tomorrow's only Thursday.
Thank you.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So we're on the Friday.
Got my week short with my girls, so. No, we're still on.
Okay.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.